I will call to order the City of Milton Common Council meeting this May 6, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at Milton City Hall, Main Street, Pigley, Wiggly, and Hometown East Hardware.
Thank you. Approval of agenda.
So moved second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Has anyone signed in?
I will go grab the public sign in sheet.
So for anyone signing in or that did sign in, you can speak now or you can wait till that agenda item is called. You'll wait, okay. Agenda item number five, approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Number six, discussion and possible action regarding special event permit application received from the American Legion Post 367 for the Memorial Day event at Veterans Park. So again, we don't have the cover sheet on these, but if anybody has any questions on this for anyone here present, otherwise a motion to approve.
I would make a motion to approve the special event permit application for the American Legion Post 367 for the Memorial Day event at Veterans Park.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That permit, that passes. Agenda item number seven, discussion of possible action regarding special event permit application received from parents at West School for the Cow Pie Bingo Family Fund Day and Raffle fundraiser. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak to that event or don't have to unless we have questions? Or a motion to pass?
I make a motion to approve the special event permit received from parents at West School for the school, or excuse me, for the Cow Pie Bingo Family Fund Day and Raffle fundraiser.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Number eight, discussion and possible action regarding speed limits along Highway 59, North Clear Lake Avenue, Madison Avenue, and South Janesville Street.
City staff met with WISDOT staff on April 15th to continue the discussion regarding speed limits along the connecting highway route of State Highway 59 in Milton. The route consists of the following segments of roadway. North Clear Lake Avenue between Rivendell Drive and West Madison Avenue. East and West Madison Avenue between North Clear Lake Avenue and South Janesville Street. And South Janesville Street between East Madison Avenue and East St. Mary Street. The route is a connecting highway. WISDOT defines connecting highways as local streets and roads that carry state highway traffic through cities and villages. Connecting highway aids provide assistance for local governments to maintain these roadways at state highway system standards. State statute allows for local authorities to determine upon the basis of an engineering and traffic investigation to declare a reasonable and safe speed limit on the highway. The statute also provides that because the route is a state trunk highway, WISDOT also needs to approve a requested change to the speed limit. Fiscal impact related to any change with the speed limit would be cost for engineering and traffic investigation. And if the engineering and traffic investigation finds a speed limit should be changed, there would be labor and material costs for sign replacements. Staff is seeking direction on whether or not the council would like staff to investigate if speed limits are wrong throughout described.
Is there anybody that wishes to speak on this? Please approach the podium, state your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Pete Petroff. I live at 5 South John Paul Road, which is the intersection of Madison Road and County Y. Regarding the speed limit, you know, as all you people are probably already aware, I've got the package of data. We've looked at the requirements from the state. We've looked at requirements from the city. And in speaking with the traffic engineer, a pretty simple decision here. We've got four schools within walking distance of that highway, of that roadway. Palmyra, Whitewater, Edgerton, all have 25 miles an hour speed limits on that same highway. So I think it's a pretty reasonable request to go ahead and reduce that speed limit and take it from there, I guess. You want me to go on about item nine? Okay, I'll be back.
Thank you.
So I was a proponent of bringing, bringing this as an agenda item. We've talked about the dangers and I've gotten several emails of risks of kids near, near bad injuries, near, I won't say near death, but some, some bad things could happen with the speed limit where it's set now. This doesn't change anything that we voted on as far as the future, the possibility of changing that intersection with the state. It only, it's forcing us, or we're asking to do something now instead of waiting, because it could be several years if we wait for them to do it. So that's why I thought we should bring it forward now.
I would move that we direct the city staff to investigate speed limits along the route that's described above.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Just not sure how much five miles an hour will make much of a difference at all. I guess I'm fine with investigating it and see what the recommendation is, but I'm not sure I'm fine going to be on that at this time. So I'm fine at least investigating it, I guess.
I would just say that it's very typical in any municipality that in a residential area, and while yes, it is both a state and a county highway that's right there, it is a residential area as well. And it's, the more common speed limit is 25 miles per hour in a residential area, where you have people backing out into a roadway, where children are playing, where families are playing. So it's not uncommon. It's just that we just have that one thing that comes together that's just odd that way.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Agenda item number nine, discussion of possible action regarding intersection traffic control at John Paul and Madison Avenue, State Highway 59. If you'd like to come up, sir, again. Go ahead. No, go ahead, read it. You can stay there, Pete, if you want to read the memo.
Okay. Yep, yep. Yeah, so as you're aware, where my stance is, the sooner we can get an always stop control sign in that intersection, the sooner we prevent accidents. Between the last city council or common council meeting we had and today, we've had at least one more accident on that corner. So I'm highly recommending we go with the always stop control. As you look through the Department of Transportation package that we all receive, you'll see the roundabout that they're proposing originally was a hundred foot diameter, which puts that sidewalk within 10 feet of two different houses and means removal of multiple trees on that intersection and up the side of my yard. According to the Department of Transportation, the always stop control is an approved alternate method to reduce and eliminate the traffic accidents at that intersection. As a side benefit, you'll have people stopped all four directions, so we won't have people trying to scoot through fourth lane and third lane and third avenue to get around John Paul Road, because they'll have to stop anyway. Every morning at 8:30, I can tell you three cars that'll come down that alley 15 miles an hour at 30 miles an hour to beat the traffic that's over on John Paul. So a four-way stop eliminates that. A roundabout doesn't do anything. In addition to that, when you look at pedestrian safety, as you come into a roundabout, where are you looking? To the left. What happens if you have kids crossing the intersection on the right? People don't stop at roundabouts. So any kid that's crossing that and you look at your package, and I think it said there's 100 kids that are going to be crossing that. And that study was done in June 18th, when there was no school in session. So be advised, when we start talking about implementing a roundabout, you're endangering human safety so cars can get through the intersection faster. And just in summary, I would say, I don't know anybody that lives in the city of Milton who came here because we have great traffic. Right? They come here because we have a good community, because we have a safe community. If you end up sitting at a stop sign for, again, DOT approved time limits, I'm great with that. Let's keep everybody safe, keep Milton a good community, and not destroy what will be the community center. If you put a roundabout, you're literally putting a round peg into a square hole. My opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mark, if you want to read the memo now.
So again, and Pete touched on this a little bit, the Public Works Committee and Common Council reviewed the state municipal financial agreement for intersection improvements at the intersection of John Paul and Madison Avenue. It's a highway safety improvement program project. The city council approved entering into that agreement on February 4th, 2025. The grant application was prepared by WISDOT due to the high incidence of crash rates in the intersection, causing the location to be included in a location of interest report. The project included installation of stop signs as an interim solution until the final improvements are determined through the design and public input process. City staff met with WISDOT staff on April 15th to discuss installation of stop signs at the intersection of John Paul Road and Madison Avenue. Because the route is a connecting highway, WISDOT cannot fund the interim stop sign improvements. The common council could direct staff to pursue the installation of additional traffic control, including the always stop at the intersection, and the cost would be funded by the city. Because the route is state trunk highway, WISDOT also needs to approve a request to add a stop along the route. Staff anticipates the cost for the installation of the always stop to be approximately the $9,774 that was estimated in the Highway Safety Improvement Program project application. If during the approval process with WISDOT is determined that trombone arms and concrete bases are not necessary, the cost could be less. Staff seeks direction on whether or not to proceed with installation of an always stop at the intersection of John Paul Road and Madison Avenue.
Alright, thank you. So same as my previous, the previous agenda item. This doesn't change anything that the state's doing for the study. In fact, it's, it's just gives us something to do right now to make that intersection more safe, and it gives us more data then, while they're doing the study, to see how this four-way stop, did it work? Did it, how did it impact that intersection? And some of the potential downfalls could be stacking up of traffic and blocking houses and what, how that impacts them. So it's a, it's a way to trial, one of the potential strongest outcomes, so. Any discussion?
I was going to ask a question. What's a trombone arm?
Ah, they're the posts that come up and then it'll go out across the road, so the stop sign would be all visible.
Trombone, I read that and I was like, I have no.
So there's costs for installation, like footings and then, and then the purchase of the arms. And that's what was included in the cost estimate prepared by WISDOT. You know, through the application process, we would see if they would determine that is necessary or not. But that would be a substantial cost that would drive that closer to that $10,000 number versus something less.
Dude. Alright, um, I can see some long-term benefits maybe they have in the stop signs, but I'm really concerned about the short-term aspect of stop signs, because we seem to still be having problems with Parkview and Blanch. We installed the stop signs there, made that four-way, and just yesterday I saw another car go right straight through the stop sign. And while that's 25 miles per hour, that's also a significantly less traveled road. And putting them on Madison Avenue where we've not had any stop signs at all controlling it, I'm concerned we're going to have a lot more accidents, especially in the short term. Just because we don't have, people aren't used to that pattern. And we might have to put up a whole bunch of different stop signs and things like that to try to get attention. I'm just concerned that might actually lead to worsening the situation, besides also slowing down traffic and things like that, too.
Are there any plans to put, speaking to the, the change, I mean, and when they changed up by, ah, is it Rodham Road there by D. Dinner? And they moved the stop signs, made what was now the road going through by the dog park there is no stop sign. They, we had problems at first, but whenever there's a change, there's going to be a problem. But they put flags and things like that. Is there any plans, at least something to call attention to it and say, hey, we've put this here now, there's a big change?
Yeah, so in our discussions with WISDOT, those are all items that would be discussed. You know, additional advanced warning signs, the red flags are an option to, the trombone arms are, you know, much more visible being out over the highway in front of the traffic. So those are all things that WISDOT's going to want to see and they're going to want to approve before they allow us to do, do anything. It's not just going to be just stop signs in that intersection, at least in the interim.
Thank you.
With that, in the conversation with WISDOT, did they recommend or did that, like, what does that approval process look like?
We would have to request the stop signs and then propose what, we'd review the MUTCD first to see what would be required in that situation, and then with some back and forth with WISDOT. I'm sure they already have a, a good idea, because they had intended, or had listed as an option. So, you know, we'll lean on their guidance as well for what, what we need to install, because they already had reviewed it and they've studied this, and it is a recommended interim solution, so.
If we, let's say it just hor, becomes horrible for our community, is there any backup plan?
Again, it's our route, so we're in charge of the traffic control. We just need to have WISDOT approval to change that. So if we put in stop signs, I guess, and it got, it didn't work, or was, you know, the impacts were negative, or, you know, council felt that they needed to be removed, we would have to go back to WISDOT then and ask them for approval to remove them.
So is it possible in those conversations that the trombone arms and the concrete won't be necessary? The way I'm reading this, there's a possibility when you guys are talking with them, it may not be necessary at that cause point, especially if it's something that's an interim. The trombone arm seems so more, more permanent when we're talking about an interim solution. And if we're looking, I don't know, that's what I'm asking, is it possible when you chat with them and say, hey, we don't want to do trombones, we want to try some stop signs here?
It is possible that we can do that. I will say this is going to be a temporary solution, and by temporary, it's going to be several years. So it's not going to be, it's not going to be for a year or two, it's probably going to be five.
Is what I thought the projected completion date was, right?
So we're talking about $2,000 a year. If we can save one accident for $2,000 a year, I think that.
That's fair. That's fair.
Is a good investment.
Yeah.
I'd entertain a motion.
I would move that we direct staff to proceed with conversation with DOT in reference to putting stop signs at the intersection of John Paul and Madison Avenue.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Number 10, discussion and possible action regarding Waltburg of Milton LLC doing business as Red Zone Pub and Grill, application for a Class B retail license for mended malt beverage and a Class B retail license intoxicated liquor at 403 West High Street.
Waltburg of Milton LLC is doing business as Red Zone Pub and Grill, have applied for the Class B retail license, which is for munting malt beverage, and a Class B retail license for intoxicated liquor for the premise of 403 West High Street. They have now taken ownership of the business and the location, which again, is located at 403 West High Street for Mike and Karen Lou, and they are requesting to have a, operate the business with liquor license. There is currently a license on site there. If this is approved, that would need to be surrendered, because a liquor license can only, excuse me, a premise can only have one liquor license at a time. Staff have completed background checks on Sean Walters, Gregory Walters, and Joshua Blankenberg, owners of the business. Megan Blankenberg will act as the agent for the liquor license. All background checks were satisfactory, satisfactory and approved by Chief Saxi. And then if this is something the council wishes to go ahead and approve, then we would make the recommendation that it is pending the outstanding charges due to the City of Milton, which is any liquor license, and also the surrender of the existing liquor license for the premise of 403 West High Street.
I make a motion to approve pending outstanding charges due to the city and surrender of existing liquor license.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Number 11, discussion and possible action regarding a work order from Baxter and Woodman Incorporated for design engineering services for the Cerns Road Regional Lift Station Improvement Project.
Excuse me. The attached work order is to perform design engineering services for the design of a new lift station, perform street and other utility improvements. In 2013, Milton completed a sanitary sewer system capacity study. That study recommended renovations to Lift Station 5, which is located along South John Paul Road, Lift Station 6, which is located along Elm Street, and Lift Station 7, which is located along Madison Avenue. The recommendations are determined necessary due to the age and condition of the existing stations and because the stations do not meet current code requirements. Additionally, these stations are in terraces with no workspace outside of the street. Lift Station 6 was recently replaced in a nearby location to provide safer workspace and access as part of the 2023 street and utility infrastructure. Based on the recommendations of this report, the 2013 report, the capital improvement plan adopted in 2021 included replacement of all three lift stations. Staff, along with Baxter and Woodman, have reviewed alternatives to replace Lift Stations 5 and 7 and have determined that the most appropriate solutions would be to also replace Lift Station 8, which is along Cerns Road, and combine all three stations into one regional lift station. This approach permanently eliminates two lift stations from service. It requires replacement of existing gravity sewers, some of which is, which is also in need of replacement. Another recommendation from the 2013 report included installation of an interceptor sewer along Madison Avenue. This was because the sewers operate at 60 to 85% of design capacity. This proposed project removes flow from these segments along Madison Avenue, reducing the need for the interceptor sewer installation at this time. In addition to the recommended sewer improvements, this project addresses pavement issues along North John Paul Road and East Sunset Drive. The most recent Pazer rating scored the segment of Sunset Drive between a two and a three, and the southern segment of North John Paul Road is a two. Some minor resurfacing has been completed along North John Paul Road. The final street component includes construction of a through street between Sunset Drive and Lucas Lane and eliminating the current intersection of Cerns Road and North John Paul Road. The proposed project does not include the replacement of Lift Station 5 at this time or any pavement-related work south of John Paul Road. Only the design of the appropriate facilities to complete this project component at a later date. Staff will be working with PMA to determine funding alternatives for the project costs, for the construction costs. Fees for services are based on the engineer's standard hourly billing rates for actual work time performed plus reimbursement for out-of-pocket expenses. The total not to exceed fee is $292,300. Staff is recommending to approve the work order for John Paul Road and Cerns Road Lift Station Design Engineering Services.
Alright, thank you. Any discussion or a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve the work order for John Paul Road and Cerns Road Lift Station Design Engineering Services not to exceed $292,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Agenda item number 12, discussion and possible action regarding a work order from Baxter and Woodman Incorporated for design and construction engineering services for Arthur Drive and Janesville Street Utility Extensions.
The subject work order provides for engineering, design, and construction-related services for new sanitary sewer mains and water mains to provide service to undeveloped parcels along Arthur Drive and Janesville Street. In addition, the project improves the water system by connecting two terminal locations and adding a loop to improve system redundancy and fire protection. Project design is anticipated to begin this spring, with bidding to be early summer and construction this fall. Fees for services are based on the engineer's standard hourly billing rates for actual work time performed plus reimbursement for out-of-pocket expenses and are funded by the accounts related to the work. The total not to exceed fee in the work order is $59,800, and this project will be funded by special assessments to adjacent property owners as allowed by city ordinance. City administration recommends approving the work order prepared by Baxter and Woodman for the design engineering services, design and construction engineering services for Arthur Drive and Janesville Street Utility Extensions.
Thank you. Any discussion on this or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the work order prepared by Baxter and Woodman for the design engineering services for Arthur Drive and Janesville Street Utility Extension, not to exceed the $59,800.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Number 13, discussion and possible action regarding change order number two for the Wellhouse Improvements Project.
The proposed change order is to install two chemical feed taps at well number five, required by the recent WDNR sanitary survey report. That's $2,933. Provide a required electrical disconnect switch after it was discovered that the existing CT cabinet did not contain a disconnect switch. And that's the largest component of the change order of $8,932.54, and a credit to return the self-contained breathing apparatus, which is a credit of $2,565. The proposed change order also adjusts contract time by moving the project's substantial completion date to October 30th, 2025, and final completion date to December 31st, 2025. This change allows for the construction of the project to occur while always maintaining two wells in service and for additional time required to obtain components from vendors that had longer than normal lead times. Baxter and Woodman has reviewed the proposed changes and recommends approval. The fiscal impact there is described in the table. It's the increase in the project cost of $9,354. City administration recommends approving change order number two for the Wellhouse Improvements Project.
Thank you. Any discussion or a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve change order two for the Wellhouse Improvements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Number 14, discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of a City of Milton Weed Commissioner.
Milton Code of Ordinance Section 2-491 requires the mayor to appoint a weed commissioner and requires confirmation by a majority vote of the common council. The weed commissioner performs the duties listed in ordinance section 26-72. There is no fiscal impact for this appointment. City administration recommends the mayor appoint and the common council approve Blaine Larson from code enforcement as the weed commissioner for the City of Milton from May 6, 2025 to May 4th, 2026.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Blaine Larson for code enforcement as a weed commissioner.
Second.
And just for the record, the mayor is appointing Blaine Larson?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding the 2025-2026 committee, commission, and election official appointments. There is an update that you've, you've all received since the agenda items were sent out, which I am recommending appointing the Tourism Consortium. Kevin Scannell, Logan Purdy to the Board of Review, and Maxwell Olson to the Historic Preservation Commission as a youth representative.
I make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six committee, commission, and election official appointments.
Second. First motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding confidentiality agreement with Rock County Judicial Privacy Act compliance.
The Wisconsin legislature has recently enacted Act two hu, two thirty-five, which is also known as the Judicial Privacy Act, and pursuant to, uh, Wisconsin statute fifty-nine point four three one R and seven fifty-seven oh seven, this act allows judicial officers to request that their personal information be shielded from public access and official records maintained by the county. Uh, when such a written request is submitted, the county is restricted from sharing this information unless a confidential, confidentiality agreement is in place with the receiving party, such as a vendor or municipality. The Rock County has submitted a confidentiality agreement that would be in effect for five years with the city of Milton to allow for the confidential information to be shared, uh, when necessary. If the city enters into the agreement, the city does agree to keep all shared confidential information private, disclose it only to employees who require access for legitimate, legitimate governmental or business purposes, and refrain from sharing the information with third parties without appropriate authorization. Attorney Schrader has reviewed this agreement and has no concerns. So the recommended motion is to approve the confidentiality agreement between the city of Milton and County of Rock as required under the two thousand twenty-three Wisconsin Act two thirty-five.
I make a motion to approve the confidential agreement between the city of Milton and Rock County as under, required under two thousand twenty-three Wisconsin Act two thirty-five.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this item. All those in favors, please say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Alright, general items, uh, start with committee reports.
I've gone in for Historic Preservation. Uh, we actually met last week, and we have a gravestone preservation workshop coming up, uh, June first, which is Sunday, from twelve to two P M. And, and Julie has been running that, she's been kind of on the committee, but she's now running that event and looking for more people who want to help, uh, preserve some gravestones. Also, um, leave coming to parks before, uh, sometime soon, we have a bunch of, a couple, four, no, five signs we did, we approved that we want to, six? Five. Four, thank you. Four signs we approved to get put up around the city, uh, that, that kind of, um, highlights some of the historical importance in the city itself. So a couple of those might have to go in front of parks because they're gonna go in parks. So that'll be coming soon. And then also just plug it, um, Civil Living History Days is not this weekend, but next weekend. And so it's free event, the Milton House, if anybody wants to show up. And we're also looking for anybody who wants to volunteer on Friday.
Okay, thank you.
Plant Commission met this, this afternoon, part of this, and approved the installation of, uh, solar panels on Chuck, Jack, Johnson, Jackson, Jackson's property, your neighbor. So there'll be some solar panels going in there. Also, remember that, uh, I think this Friday is the first community days that we're gonna have, so everybody show up, buy food, buy stuff from vendors.
Thanks, Ken.
Uh, the Parks Commission met on April twenty-second, so a while ago. Um, but not since, uh, we haven't met since then. Uh, some new mulch going into playgrounds. We decided to table, uh, the playground equipment for North Ridge Park until we look at the comprehensive recreational plan. Um, the tree planting went great, so shout out to everyone that came to plant the trees, that was really fun. Um, so yeah, things are moving forward.
Cool. Thank you. Charlie, you're gonna defer to Ashley for library, yes, okay. That's what I did too, so that's okay.
Oh, thank you.
Actually, you don't have to let them do that. They, they can give a report.
Alright, moving on then to staff reports.
The Northwest Street Improvements Project is started this week. Uh, they actually were out sawing today, traffic control is installed. Uh, they're anticipating being completed in early June. I think if the weather's good, there's a chance they may be even done sooner than that. The Well for Rehabilitation Project is, um, going, going well, we had the change order tonight, and well, five should be back online either later this month or early next month, so all that will remain is to work out well for.
Awesome. Thanks. Paul?
I have no report.
Nothing on vacation?
There's this really cool city hall.
There it is. Jenny?
The city of Milton older person vacancy, uh, was published in the Gazette and also on the city's website and social media. As of right now, we do have five people that have, have expressed interest and submitted all required forms. Um, so it, the deadline is today, uh, is today for May sixth, so there is still time to send information in. But that's all I have, otherwise.
Ashley?
We posted our teen summer internship position that is available for youth sixteen to nineteen. So we got this through a grant through I M L S or D P I, and luckily the I M L S funding is available for this particular program. Um, it's open till May eighteenth, and before Kelsey left, we had, um, eight applications for that. So excited to see how many more we receive. And that position will be working at the library, um, June first to August thirty-first. Um, the Milton Public Library had a, Milton Public Library Foundation had a successful mini golf fundraiser a couple of weekends ago. And then we had a very successful food truck rally on Sunday. So I'm done with big programs for a little bit. And then both the Story Garden Subcommittee and the Library Board approved the purchase of some musical instruments for our gardens. So those will hopefully be installed this summer.
Okay, thank you. Great.
What kind of musical instruments?
We are gonna have a xylophone and a pedal drum, nice and loud.
Chief?
Um, I just threw it up on Facebook this morning. Uh, we're currently hiring for a part-time summer school crossing guard. Uh, so if you see that, please feel free to share that. I have one month to fill that, so any help would be appreciated. Um, we have two squads that are currently, currently being converted, um, from our white S U Vs to the new black two thousand twenty-five models. Um, so our Public Works is working hard on that, Chris and Mike. Um, Officer Angelica Harder, uh, returned to work, so, uh, after an extended leave for F M L A, so we are back to full staff, and bless you. Officer Nick Moore will be completing the academy in, uh, just under two weeks, so he'll jump to us on the nineteenth. Um, he's on track to graduate. Um, Officer Jared Fish has begun shadowing, um, selectively shadowing School Resource Officer Schneider to get himself acclimated, acclimated before that transition happens for the next school year. Um, and with the Alliance Energy Grant that we received, uh, a month or so ago, we got a couple of new crossing guard signs, um, with some L E D lights to help assist our crossing guards. For those that just had the plain Jane generic stop signs, they now have the nicer version, newer, a little lighter, a little more easier to hit off of cars that they get close to instead of cardboard ones. Um, and just a reminder that we still have a pile of free gun locks in our lobby, so Monday through Friday, uh, Monday through Thursday, excuse me, five thirty A M to four P M. Um, we, I think we've gone through over a hundred, though, already, so we have plenty more, though, that can be distributed, so please feel free to share that. Um, otherwise, it's all.
I saw that crossing guard new sign. It's very noticeable.
Alright, that's a goal, yeah.
I love it.
That's good. Are the crossing guards required to wave at every car? Because we, most of them do. These are the most friendly people. That, their arm must be sore.
I've talked to Jerry to stop doing that, because he's gonna hurt himself. He's gonna need rotator cuff surgery. I don't know how he does it every day. It's just too much.
Thank you.
I don't take you away with me every time, but he does.
Even if you go through three times, every time.
Yeah.
It's horrible.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so team building exercise, favorite food or beverage all time, nice and simple. Go.
Alright, I will go. I'll, uh, Norwegian lepsa with a little bit of butter.
Wow.
It's good.
With a medium rare porterhouse.
I'm gonna go with french fries. Just give me a thing of french fries.
Shrimp with real, yellow grits and hush puppies.
Brussels sprouts.
No.
No, nobody says that, not ever. In the history of people, has anyone ever said that? I know it, right? Like, he wasn't even.
He went early, too.
You got an agreement in the audience.
Did you put anything on them or just like?
Maybe if you cover them with like a solid reduction and cook them to the edge of your life.
I'm gonna say, um, fresh baked bread and butter.
Sweet corn.
Apples.
I'll do a classic, nice filet, nice steak.
I'll go tacos.
Chicken or beef?
Fun.
Beef. Well, what about shrimp? Wait, what about shrimp tacos? Can't leave out the seafood. Fish tacos? Not as much. Not so much, not so much. Nice burrito. Uh, Mary's does have good tamales on, uh, on Mondays.
Attorney Mark?
Well, I think I'll hit both up at the same time. Have a nice dark beer, that's a meal in a can.
I'd go with, uh, smoked brisket. That'd be my. Yeah, so you can just yell. You don't have to go to the podium and do the address thing. What's, okay. 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 Cool.
Pickles. Pickled, pickled what?
Pickles?
Pickled cucumbers? Okay. Pickled what's? You can get all sorts of pickled stuff.
That's true, okay.
I think the cucumber was implied, Paul.
Uh, it was, it was, but thanks for clearing.
I just wanted to make sure.
He thought beef was implied, too.
Okay.
Really?
Okay, well, thank you all for, uh, playing along. I was secretly curious how many alcoholic beverages were gonna come up, but generally we're a sobering council.
That's, no, that's a completely different question now.
But I'd drink if I was him, too, so. That wasn't the case until I started be, coming here. Alright, guys.
That's fair.
Next meeting date, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all.